Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is Robert Stevenson. It is six oh two on Tuesday, the twenty eighth of March. I am going to open the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District pool committee meeting for this evening. Can I get a motion to be entered in the meeting? So, can I get a show of hands? Aaron, let's record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Can I get everybody to stand for quick?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. So. Okay, so our second, we have our consent agenda. Tonight is going to consist of our minutes coming seventh, fundraisers that are coming through, all of this, all of these items are in your packet. This is going to be the point that there is anything in that consent agenda that anybody wants us to pull out. Just let me know now so we can do that under the action items. If not, when we get to that portion of the action items, we'll be approving all of those items in the consent agenda. All right, fantastic. We've got ones going around. Everybody can take a second to get those done. Lieutenant Willard, do we have any correspondence for this evening?
Thank you.
Great, fantastic. Okay, public comment? Anybody here for public comment? Nobody here. Excellent. Okay. Moving on. Okay. Only one of you tonight. What's going on?
I don't know.
To be covering from the black.
Is he like? All right, you're up.
All right, so with MCAS testing this week, high school students have been very pleased with the late opening and the best luck to everyone through testing. The drama club had a very successful performance at Shrek this past week, and I was told they sold around twelve hundred tickets. Spring sports competed their preseasons that have made their varsity JV teams, and boys volleyball has their first scrimmage slash play day tonight up at the high school from five to seven. They're playing Esang Mino and Agua. And then on the eighth, the National Honor Society held volleyball tournament in which the same group of seniors from the last tournament won, which thankfully, most of them are on the volleyball team, so it should be a good season. Seniors have thirty-seven school days left until they sign out.
Four hours and fifteen minutes.
The junior senior crowd will be held at the ranch this year on May nineteenth. And then DLE students will be having their annual reception Wednesday at Yearful Club. Students are going to give presentations about their internships and speeches where they can thank their mentors and talk about what they do.
Well, thank you so much.
And I was seeing you're doing the unit.
Yes, I am.
Glad to have you, I can tell you.
Yeah, I'm majoring in nursing, so I'm excited.
Good, so we'll get you on a six-year program to come back.
Oh, wait, I want to come work in.
Oh, you want?
Jen has already informed me of that.
All right, educational presentation, Mr. Wyckender.
Good evening.
So this is a little birthday.
Thank you, yes. I don't want to waste the time.
Hey, a money finer, if you're saying that's on you.
Is that true?
I think so.
So, the town of South, I've been here to the meetings before talking about our fuel-efficient vehicles policy. This is all part of the great community initiative that the town of South is signed onto, being the school district. We have to play a part in that because our building is large. We need to participate. The last piece of this puzzle that the town would be expecting from the committee is a letter adopting their energy reduction plan. You should have a copy of it in your packets. Just a brief overview, it's, the goal is to reduce the delivered energy usage, be it fuels or electricity in the town by twenty percent over the next five years. And upon making that commitment, the town will then have access to branch funds in order to accomplish those goals. And that's included, the school, the school district would be good. So that's, that's the broad strokes. What you have here is the nitty-gritty of actually how we get there. So this is a proposal for various projects across the town, including the schools, broken out into goal years or energy reduction strategies in the town. Does anybody have any questions about this plan?
So lengthy document.
Indeed, yeah.
Quick notes, in terms of what will impact school districts for months? What are the most significant or important changes that the school district would make?
So these, these initiatives, they basically approached me and they said, what, what do you, what do you see as the low-hanging fruit, the weakness, the projects that you want to accomplish? It dovetails right into my five-year plan for, for energy conservation. It's something I've been working on my whole six years here. So it's, it's really, it's going to be completely painless for us. If anything, it's just, it's another funding source for me to accomplish my goals of, of energy conservation in the district. Specifically for the buildings, it would complete the lighting retrofits at the high school to go from fluorescent to LED, which we haven't done yet. And also supply us with some grant funding for HVAC controls in order to. Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, that's a list of projects I just thought I would, I would touch on the ones I'm most excited about. But yeah, there's, there's quite a few projects that we would be eligible to receive grant funds for. But it's stuff we would do. Be that through incentives, through utility, or possibly capital borrowing. And if we get these grants.
What are VFTs?
Variable frequency drives. They're used to control the speed of motors, so you're not running a motor at a hundred percent that you don't have.
And the refrigeration controls or the refrigerator controls, is that with regard to food service?
That's correct. Yeah, so we, we are the only buildings in town that, municipal buildings in town that operate large walk-in foods and freezers, and there's some, there's some, not insignificant energy settings to be in there through use of controls and ECM.
And the condensing boiler, what is, what is the change there?
I don't believe that's one of our projects. Is it, is it under high school? It, oh, okay. So we kept in reserve the hydrotherm boilers that are non-condensing, and they, they actually are still used on cold days or as backup. And we would like to replace that with a more modern and much more efficient condensing boiler. At some. That would be, that would be a great project.
I think they deal with the air conditioning.
Or removing boilers, just so you know. Keep it cooler in these spaces. Especially communities.
Because it's not cold enough in here.
Because if you look at page nineteen, I circled the second bullet from the bottom, which says setting thermosacks above highest temperature, it was sharp and the lowest in the picture, and encourage employees and building users to dress accordingly.
Yeah, that's not, I'm not a fan of that one.
My question is, what's the highest?
Plenty of blankets on hand.
I'll add extra blanket.
I can't, I can't go over and say, six is fine in my house.
So Eric, like Mass Save, obviously it's residential. We pay, it's kind of like an insurance policy through every resource, through resource gas as well. We pay for Mass Save to come through energy. Yes, is a, is a commercial or a school building part of that? Where, where you call Mass Save and they'll actually change only. So on commercial projects, we're limited by a few, few aspects. So yes and no. Short answer, yes, we, we are eligible for incentive program. The no aspect of it is we're limited to dollar-figure amount for each one of those by permit laws and state masks. We can only do a hundred thousand dollars for these projects at one time. And then also anything over thirty-five thousand dollars. We've approached the committee years past and like upgrades. But yes, yes, we, we do have that opportunity. However, it is at the whim of the utility. They don't, they don't just have a blanket contract for residential stuff like for us. So if the utility doesn't have an appetite for a large incentive program, they, they're just not going to do it. And I've been hammering them through, you have to do it through consultants on a big commercial scale like this, and I, I will. It's very lucrative sometimes for the consultants. They have, they have a pay structure that's set up by the utility. It's not money out of our pocket. They, that's their incentive to come and solicit us, and I always take them up on them. I've probably had six or seven walkthroughs in the last four years. I'm getting a breaking code. And these are just projects that didn't work out. A lot of these companies, they, they'll put together the whole incentive package, and they'll say, well, this is what we want to do. This is expected reduction of energy and blah, 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 and they'll say it to the utility, and the utility, just at that time, would not be interested. So I always have one of these projects shovel ready, ready to go, so I can get that if we can do it. But on that, the mercy of utility.
Super, anybody got any other questions?
Thank you very much, sir. I just, just to be clear on the expectations here, the, the, yeah, we're going to need a letter from the superintendent, just to, so everybody knows what, and what we're signing to. So the, the sample letters there, we, we may make an edit to that to, to just certify that the fuel-efficient vehicle policy has been. But that's something you put it on a pretty good basis, shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right.
I wish.
No, yeah.
Okay, so also in our packets, the, I think they were in the packets, C and D?
Yes, they were in the packets.
Okay, so the good news is, is that we've already gone through C and D in our policy subcommittee, so we'll probably have E and F coming for first reading next meeting. So we're making some good progress. C and D really didn't have a lot of real.
C and D were really easy. Basically, all we had to do was compare our versions with Mass's versions. And Liz is awesome about, you know, telling us the differences, and I would say almost every single case, we just took the Mass version just to streamline things.
So, anybody have any questions on those? Fantastic. Okay.
First loss.
Yeah, we may be going for a record tonight.
Not top me, sir.
All right, action items.
Move to approve consent agenda items as listed, recommended, so moved.
Can I get a show of hands to approve the content agenda? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to adopt town itself an energy reduction plan and fulfillment of the common laws of mass, given screen communities grant program criteria and rate recommendations.
So moved.
Anybody have any questions on that presentation? Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
A move to through the fiscal year 2024 Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District assessment ratios to the member towns as follows. Operating assessment ratios, Southwick eighty-four point eight zero four percent, Holland two point eight nine one percent, Granville twelve point three zero five percent, for a total of one hundred percent. Capital assessment ratios, eighty-three point one one four percent, Holland three point seven five two percent, in Granville thirteen point one three five percent, for a total of one hundred percent recommended, so.
Can I ask the super question? Why are they different?
I was just going to have you guys remind everybody about that.
So the operating assessment ratios are an average of the last five years. So every year we take the attendance and we got rid of one year and we added last year, and that's how the operating. The capital assessment ratios are set in stone for five years, and they're based off of a census data.
Now, so am I correct that they're, they're like on, based off separate sets of data? The operating assessment is based off the number of students in the schools, and the capital is based on the number of people in the towns, is that correct?
I would have to check on that.
Okay.
I have to check on it. It could, I think you're right, because it's based off the census data.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I know the operating is based off of the student, because I did that one.
Right. That's the role in five-year average.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yes, and then the capital is a fixed five-year.
Offered census.
The interesting thing is that, which make, it's funny now, the number of kids are actually reflecting the base population, which you wouldn't think would be as close as it is.
And I think that capital, if I remember correctly, I think that goes like FY twenty-seven, so it's, that is going to be post FY twenty-seven.
Then it'll be rebased and then. All right, any questions, any more questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District fiscal year 2024 budget in the amount of twenty-seven million, five hundred, two thousand, eight hundred, ninety-five dollars, recommended.
So moved, second.
Any questions on this?
Now, has there been any change since the last budget presentation? I now should know about.
No.
Well, Saturday was okay.
Saturday Superintendent Willard was a rock star. No, it went very well. They had very, very few questions. Mr. Chamel and myself were there supporting the superintendent. They asked good questions. I think we did a great job with the, with the budget presentation the, the week before, like all the, a number of the finance committee members were there. Two of the three select members were there, so this was some, it was a re-agitation of a lot of that for them.
Who was there on Saturday?
Finance committee and the three selected, it was a joint session.
Of?
Of the select boards.
Of all three towns?
No, 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 just Southwick.
Just South.
Tallinn and Granville, from my understanding, from a historic perspective, have never asked us to go to a pre-budget presentation.
Did talent send anybody last week? Granville had a representative.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2024 Southwick-Tallinn-Granville Regional School District assessments to the member towns as follows. Operating assessment transportation, Southwick eighty-four point eight zero four percent, nine hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars. Holland two point eight nine one percent, thirty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. Granville twelve point three zero five percent, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars. Capital assessment to Southwick eighty-three point one one four percent, one million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars. Holland three point seven five two percent, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred fourteen dollars. Granville thirteen point one three four percent, two hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Minimum contribution, Southwick ten million, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. Holland four hundred ten thousand, seven hundred eight dollars. Granville one million, six hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. Discretionary charges, Southwick eighty-four point eight zero four percent, one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Holland two point eight nine one percent, six thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Granville twelve point three zero five percent, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Non-discretionary district services to town, Southwick twelve thousand dollars. Holland nothing, Granville nothing, for a total assessment of Southwick twelve million, nine hundred forty thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars. Holland five hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars, to Granville two million, seventy thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, recommended, so moved.
Okay.
Quick question on the capital assessment. That includes our capital that we're asking for in addition to the the school building capital that's assessed every year, right?
Must be, yes.
Because it can't be, because that, that's more than what our capital is.
It is, because Southwick's building assessment is one point three nine one.
There we go. That's it, that's exactly. Okay.
Next to the operational assess- assessment, why is transportation there in front?
Uh, it because it's a line item in the budget. It's a lot.
That's not just, that nine fifty-four is not just transportation.
Right.
Oh, maybe. Actually, that might.
I'm pretty sure it is. Yes, transportation is nine fifty-four for Southwick, thirty-two for Tallinn, and one thirty-eight five sixty-one.
So it's just, that's, we're definitely just.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And what are the district services to the town under non-discretionary?
If one, the non, the non-discretionary. Southwick just wants, so they can reuse our buildings when they want to, like annual town meetings or special town meetings or first thing, they just spend the budget.
For example, parents.
Got it.
It's just.
Because we always use the tournament of the high school.
Got it.
Makes sense. Superdude. All right, any other questions? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the authorization when incurred debt by the issuance of similar bonds or notes up to the amount of five hundred fifteen thousand for the purchase of all items specified in the STG RSD FY twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan as follows. Network improvements, four hundred fifty thousand, maintenance fans, sixty-five thousand, for total proposed improvements and acquisitions of five hundred fifteen thousand, recommended.
So.
Okay, so that capital assessment may just be the buildings, and this is, this is included in it?
Yep. That, that is what, for the previous five years?
Right, no, no, but I'm just wondering, because this is a separate line item.
That, well, this is maybe going to affect the FY twenty-four budget? The, I mean, FY, yeah, FY twenty-four, that, what's we incur?
Yeah.
Next year will take off a two thousand nineteen and a fifth of that will go into that capital line item.
So in the previous one, in this one, the capital is past approved debts. And now we're looking to go to the towns for this additional one.
Right.
Which will go in for future years.
And it'll be one fifth of that will click budgets next year.
Correct.
Now, has there been any? So I, I, I'm looking at the, the network improvements. I know that initially we said that, you know, we were looking at potentially total six hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand would be grant money. Do we have any more specifics in terms of like what the breakdown looks like in terms of the network improvements?
Well, the data that I supported, I, all I can share with you is I've continued to go ahead and, and I picked that apart and get more feedback on that. The numbers that we have given you in that initial amount is what we believe it is. So what we provided to there with the, with the switches, and making sure that we can go ahead and do the access and radios and alarms component, that remains the same. All I've done is tried to find savings for places, but all of that that's current in there right now is the same stuff.
But that, but that was only with one, through one bid, correct?
Oh, that particular part is only through one bid, yes.
Right, okay, so, so from our end, theoretically, this would be the cap of what this would cost.
That's certainly the.
Because we, we should get, and I think we're obligated to get three bids
Yes.
before we do any sort of investment like this. So we're going, so i- is it your, your intention, I'm assuming, is to find two other bids?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so then, and Superintendent Willard, correct me if I'm wrong here. We approved five hundred fifteen thousand dollars. If we only need four hundred and fifty, we're only taking four hundred and fifty. The towns approve this as a, as an expenditure?
Yep.
If we don't need that much, then it, it, it's not full.
Right.
I can say, I, I did a walkthrough last week, Garland and his staff, looked at all three of the buildings, went through, you know, audio, audio, video, and, you know, saw the, the problems that they're having. I could tell you from my experience, Garland and his staff are very, very good to have on this team. He has done a tremendous job identifying the problems, the device issues with connectivity, the dead spots within the buildings. He has Garland and team have it narrowed down to specific areas that really have the highest concentration where you can't connect, you know, over four thousand devices, phones and cameras and, you know, the, the doors, everything is, is riding on that network, and I can tell you, it's choked, and it, it needs, it needs improvement, and honestly, I think the longer we wait, come, you know, January one, you're going to be, if we don't act on it fast, honestly. I think, I think, you know, the research and homework he's done, in my opinion, is top-notch.
Yeah, and he actually submitted his RFP today for us to look at, and it is extremely.
Garland, Garland has done his due diligence, and, and he has done all he can to this point. It actually now falls on me where I'm, so this being my first project of this magnitude, I, I'm making sure that I'm doing this appropriate as well, so I'm taking a little longer than probably Garland wants me to make right now, but to make sure that I do, the RFP is, is done correctly, the number of bids. Some of the money is out of capital fund, but some of it is also out of the ESER grant as well, which is a federal fund, which may or may not add a different component to the procurement process, so Steve has been a great help to me last week when I met with him. I've sent this off to somebody else just to get one more look at it. But Garland has, Garland has pushed through this to the point where he can, it's now at the point where, where it's really on my lap, just to make sure that I need to take the rest away, but, but I'm going a little slower than, like I said, than probably Garland wants right now, but given it's the first project of this magnitude, I want to make sure I'm, and I, we don't get halfway through it and then I'm telling Garland.
I can't remember what meeting that we, that we said this, but if everybody isn't aware, Steve Presles agreed to be Joe's sort of mentor.
Yes.
Sort of mentor officially, so that we just locked up here last week, right?
I met with Steve last Thursday, and Steve's, he's busy personal and, and doing some other stuff. He agreed to do it, and so we're going to go, we're going to make it official through the, the Mars Association, which is Massachusetts Associated Regional Schools, so they're working on that to set it up, but yes, Steve will, Steve will be there to mentor us through this.
So for those of you who have not been to town meeting in Granville yet, word of warning that capital is the hardest issue, and you will have the absolute most questions about this capital, particularly this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I forgive me, I don't have the slides in front of me from the presentation last week, but if there isn't a super basic slide in there about what's that four hundred and fifty is, strongly suggest you add one and be prepared to answer questions on that.
We'll be ready. I appreciate that.
Stop it.
With, yes.
Yeah. It'll be, I'll be there. I'm going to go to all three meetings if you're, just in case there's any questions. We'd probably, Garland, if we don't have, I'd like to, I can't remember if we had it up there, but we need to have a, if for some reason this is not approved, what happens? Like, what happens when this stuff goes down?
Right.
Like, if it's not approved, and we don't get the green light to go get all new, all new things, the access points, what happens?
Do you want me to answer that now?
No, no, I, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's a colossal crash and nothing works.
I kind of want to know.
Yeah, well, it probably is not going to, it's not going to come crashing now like all, like all at once, but I, the first thing we're going to run into is, you're going to impact your business. The high school for sure is going to be, that's, we spent nine months really working hard, and I know that what we do in technology is behind the scenes and stuff, and we can go into every kind of acronym, you know, then. But what I can promise you is we've, I use the phrase, I've gone through the tailpipe to look at the carburetor, and, and we cleaned up everything we can. So today, I'm happy to report, wasn't one single, not a single network issue during MCAS today. We had some other stuff, but not one single network problem connectivity whatsoever, and that's testament to a lot of hard work. So what does that mean? It just means when something drops and I'm worried about the core switch, if that goes down, forget it, we're not, we're not printing, we're not photocopying, we're not telephoning. We are dead in the water. I think we can get some string and some cans, and it starts locating that way.
I mean, like, if, if the course which goes down, what impacts have the kids?
They're not.
But that, you know, I mean, that's the kind of, your business is going to be affected.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I, I would recommend that we have, if the core switch goes down, if this isn't replaced, no student can get on any of their, on any of their computers. No, you, like, that's.
That's embarrassing.
Pam, is that?
I will say.
Like, that kind of thing.
Right.
Okay. So we want to have like, okay, ugly, you know, Sodom and Gomorrah kind of stuff. What happens if this?
I can say, I can go on a tour, and they said our core switch is twenty years old, and it really has a shelf life of ten years. So when you talk about living on borrowed time here, we're on borrowed time.
So the equipment is manufactured discontinued. There's no more technical support. You can't get anything for backup. They don't make that product anymore.
Right.
You know, I, I run across that in my own job. Seventy-one networks of which we can only maintain ten today. Because none of that is manufactured anymore, and you can't get anything for backup.
Just to ask this stupid question, but how come we didn't look into any of this prior to right now?
Yeah, that's why he's here.
I have been asking, Joe, for how long have we been asking? Since my first day here?
Well, I mean, some of it is, when you get the building project, they give you this money, and you have to spend the money, like you can't put. A quarter of the ruling aside for every year for the next ten years, so you can keep up with these projects, so. You know, we put all this money into the the infrastructure of the technology, and now it's ten years old. And and that's eight to ten is really the lifespan of some of the things that that Garland has talked about, um, that fit in the capital budget, now the servers. That's, that's a different game, I don't know where that was.
But we have, I'm gonna guess, in the last two years.
Right.
We haven't had anything that's come across. The school committee's desk to say, hey, can we get money to do this?
No, but we're well aware of the network issues on the regional school area.
No, no, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they spent a lot of money putting the patching in, and Garland's, Garland was tasked with.
Uh.
He was sets.
Yeah, I mean.
This was no getting through when he was hired.
We're paying a lot of money out to to Band-Aid it, but but how can we fix that? That made the point of Garland's done that.
Yeah.
Thank God we got Garland. What if, what if, what if we kept trying to patch this, and all of a sudden the, what is it, the core switch?
Right. I I don't even wanna think about it, Erica, because this is literally.
You.
And like, and and Garland wants to come in and talk to us, I'm like. Except for our network, he's like, I don't want to talk about the network, I'm like, I don't need to talk about the network, I'm like, I need to talk about this, and he's so sick of me hearing you talk about it. But we have no idea, we have not had anybody before Garland who could come in here and tell us exactly what was wrong with our stuff. So I can't tell you how hard he and his team have worked, um, when I tell you like when he says he's gone through it, he he's like, they're they're literally. Splicing fibers together and reconnecting them.
It keeps knocking his head, you know about this.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I fully remember all this.
Are you the girl shirt out there?
No, uh, I'm part of the, of the tech team, yeah, so I've been well acquainted with a lot of the issues.
Like, really, if we'd known it's been a problem. We didn't realize how serious it was, because we don't know, until you have like your surgeon come in and tell you how bad it is, we have symptoms, but we don't know what the diagnosis is.
And the science department's getting all the bigger cuts ready in the street.
Literally. Yeah.
I think what's important too is. What's really nice about this, now, there's a lot of pain involved in it and restless nights and concerns, because you know, we had to get to the MCAS, and that was our big, that was, today was our Super Bowl, and I. We got tomorrow, so we're at halftime. So, I mean, I think we're up seven, nothing, so. But I think the 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 summer lining here, there is really two, and I think it's important, and I think I think the district should take a take a victory lap, one is. When the equipment was purchased, there was some investment made. It was good investment, a good quality investment, and that's the kind of stuff that I would like to repeat. Right, so we're in this position, and we're still running, although it's painful from time to time. But the fact that this went this long is, somebody back in the day did make an investment, that they didn't go cheap, so that that's a win. Okay. The second part about it, and this was in something I I'm sure that my team would. Completely like to do in a different way, but we went from zero to a hundred and fifty miles an hour. In the learning curve, to take advantage to the ownership, and it wasn't without pain, and it wasn't without some stress within the department. And yet, when we do get a new network, we're going to be in a much better position to be able to support the needs. The students and teachers and and the rest of the community that's here, in ways in which we couldn't have done before, so. You know, yeah, trust me, there's been some heated conversations and some restless nights.
Yeah.
And yet. You got the money out of it, it was value, we got, you made, I I think we put together a plan. That we can get quality stuff, once we get the bids come in, and set us up for for success moving forward. And my team, and I'm very proud of these guys, and having Amy aboard has been a real. Really huge piece, because we've been able to do so much more without your award. That we're going to be ready to evolve and to grow. We couldn't have had that if we didn't go through that growth pain, that was, it was forced, we did it, yeah.
And you think about the amount of devices in each building. Take an average hallway, we figured four hundred feet. Multiply, you know, there's five thousand two hundred eighty feet a mile. You have how many devices?
I don't know.
Guess I'm in.
Wifi, uh, a total of, well, probably four, four of them, yeah, give what devices, then turn the network access points and.
How many lands you think you have?
How many lands, well, we've got about twenty seven E lands, yeah.
Okay, so multiply that by the amount of feet running through the ceilings, we figured about eleven miles. I mean, the buildings of fiber and and uh catfied copper. Feeding your network, so eleven miles off that network. You know, everything we do in the, you know.
So how long, if we get this equipment, how long to install it, so long?
Well, that's something that we put in the RFP, and that's gonna mean, I think that that should be a really important conversation, what you really did is you stuck the finger in it, is that. Whomever we get involved in this, we've got a really short window, we've gotta get this in, because you can't be in the middle of this in August, September. You know, I mean, we have to have a go date by the twentieth of August, you know, I mean, we've gotta be ready. And so that plan is uh, it's bringing some anxiety to the team, we're gonna get there. Right, um. We have, you've gotta move on it, so, but the the thing about it, this is is Patrick has talked about. And I mean, when you put it into the terms that you talked about, you know, there's eleven miles with the stuff in these buildings, and and if it's fiber and each one of them has an end. You know, and that's why we have, you should see Chris up the summer, sit up the ladder, sweat dripping on his head, trying to. Melt the cable just so we can get it and and so we can start the stuff moving. Now, good thing about it. We've learned a lot. And the technology has lasted a long time, and we'll do it again, and we'll be in better shape.
What about supply chain issues?
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a real problem, I have had a couple of opportunities to speak with vendors about this, the first conversation I had with a particular vendor that's been. Really responsive and helped us on this, was the issue of supply chains.
Yeah.
Now, the thing that's important to note too is, we've been having really good candid conversations with each other, the thing that's the most difficulty we have right now are the switches. And my problem is my core switch is twenty years old, so getting an RFP cooking out there, get this thing down, side seal and deliver it on this thing is of the utmost speed for us. Cause I, you know what I mean? Yeah. Well, yeah, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna get better.
That's not it, you know, side tables are easy.
Yeah, no, switches are a tough one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but the thing about it is, is that we've started, and Jared will tell you, we started this conversation. Months ago, before we knew what our answer was going to be, we started having conversations with vendors that can deliver, and that's what's important. You know, when when you. Look, we're not a huge district, and we know that, right, so our buying power compared to a lot of these other places. You know, if you go to a big, you know.
Intercity.
Yeah, they're gonna just, they're just gonna munch up stuff that's out there. So we've been fortunate. We've been able to find some good vendors who understand that, that their their market is smaller, not going huge big. So to them, we're 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 an enjoyable customer and and. And Jared will tell you, I'm a big relationship marketer, you know what I mean, so I'm on the forward route anyway, but it's all part of, supply chain is not a small problem.
Can we go directly to the manufacturers of these?
No, manufacturers don't sell direct, you have to go to a supplier, you have to go through some vendor of some kind.
There are no. Manufacturers that they contract, so that you can.
Generally, you don't, no. Generally, you go through a supplier like, similar to not exactly like going to a car dealership. Right, even we can't buy directly from Microsoft.
Right.
Right, we have to go through a vendor.
Not that that matters with supply chain issues anyways.
Yeah, everybody's in the same boat, however. If we can move quickly. There's a chance, a better than good chance at the moment.
So you need a P O at the end of April.
I really need to start moving.
I'm not joking.
Yeah.
I mean, if. These capital funds don't get approved, is there a Plan B? Well.
Well, I don't wanna talk about Plan B, but if there is a Plan B, I can tell you.
So I think the Plan B has to be a reduction of the four hundred and fifty, and if there, you know, if it isn't approved, you know. Would the towns approve a lesser amount, and if so, what can be prioritized, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think. If for some, this is why I wanted it structured this way. Because if it does, if we do run into a challenge at the towns. Having it structured the other way we had it, part of it was in the regular budget, part of it was in the capital budget, we could have been caught where. We get capital approved, but we don't get the rest of it that's approved inside the school budget. And now, we wanna keep it, now you're talking about a teacher or something else that we gotta cut. If we've got a maintenance van in there too. I mean, hopefully, we've got some good rationale as to why we need the maintenance van. Um, but I think. Reasonable people, when they hear the challenges of the network. I think it's reasonable to think that they can understand the necessity and the urgency of having this approved.
I think this conversation that we just had right now, kinda gave it that sense of urgency, so is there a way to break this?
Well, that's, well, we're gonna.
Conversing.
I'll give you like a quick flow down of how the network is filled, so NBI Mass Broadband. Initiative back in the day was funded by the Commonwealth of Mass to provide internet to all. Outlying communities and school and municipality districts. The way they built the design at this school. Is the feed comes in through this building, Powder Mill, and then it. Branches out to Woodland and the regional school. If the feed came into the regional school, which has the highest concentration problem. They maybe could. Build the network specific to the regional school. This year, let's just say, and then branch onward, however, because the way that network is designed, coming through here. You have to build from Powder Mill on to get to. The regional school and Woodland, so you can't just do a piece today, and then another piece next year, you have to build from zero. And that's the way it was designed out of the gate twenty years ago. So the feed comes in this building, then there's kind of running to each additional building. The feed, this, yeah, underground, right. By fiber from this building to the regional and the school, then the.
Can't pick up the sports.
Alright, well, anybody got any other questions on this? Okay, so can I get a show of hands to approve the capital plan? Let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the M I I A Health Benefits Trust STG RSD Renewal Proposal FY twenty four, current rates and renewal rates recommended, so.
Any questions on this, I see your dental costs for the teachers are going down.
But everything else looks like a fixed fifty percent.
Very low, yes.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that that is an overall increase, that since we're splitting fifty fifty, it's shared equally?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the appointment of Shannon Bennett as the STG RSD Treasurer recommended, so move.
Questions on this one? Had a retired chair, it's gonna be our.
How many, how many hours a week is this?
One.
Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Uh, move to approve the revision to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four calendar, May, June, eighth changes due to alignment. FY twenty four, twenty four, half day staff collaboration, five twenty seven, twenty four, Memorial Day. Five thirty through thirty first, twenty twenty four kindergarten screening, and June first, twenty twenty four graduation. Graduation recommended, so move.
It's in this calendar here.
We also had a date issue with this, right, roll the date?
Alignment here.
Um, you know how we made the adjustment to this year's calendar to reflect the late starts for MCAS, is that already built into next year's calendar?
It's on here, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. What's interesting is, it is not on the Westville Public Schools calendar, yes, I got a call. Were there kids walking around? Well, they were, because they had two, three hours delay.
Three hours.
I was on the island, I just found, you got the same call as me, I just got it. I didn't know about it until like last Friday, either did I, it's not on their calendar, so.
It's tomorrow too.
Tomorrow too, yeah, yeah.
We have better communication than I'm just.
Same.
There we go, so.
But doesn't mean that. Strenth has less figuring out.
What?
That doesn't always mean that the.
Correct.
Alright, can I get a show of hands to approve the revised calendar? Mr. Jeffrey, you are, sorry, sorry, I guess. Seven zero zero. I thought the motion go, it passes seven zero zero, looking for a little guy, alright, Superintendent Willard, give a report for us.
Yes, just three quick things, one, I just wanted to say, um, I was able to go see Shrek last Thursday, um, congratulations to all those kids, it was. Absolutely fabulous, and the talent of our children, if you haven't gone to one of our musicals yet, I didn't, I missed Clue because my daughter was having her baby, but I was able to go to Shrek, and I'm telling you. You need to go if you haven't gone. Because our kids, for such a small school district, have huge talents, and kudos to um all all participants, it was fabulous.
Well, not only that, but like, we're not talking one production a year.
Like two, right, exactly, like, these are big productions, the big deal, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort, and for such a small district, two days a year is pretty amazing. This was pretty incredible. Yes, it was pretty incredible, my granddaughter. She's so cute, she had a lead minute, second act, but she won. It was, yeah, that that by one recommend, recommendation will be on Thursdays, if they do it again on Thursdays, which I thought was great. If they started it at six o'clock as opposed to seven, because a lot of our school age kids were there, and a lot of our younger kids came on Thursday night, and I think we started it at six. And it got over earlier, I think we even have a bigger turnout on the Thursday night, so that was great, I love the Thursday, um. Night. The other thing I wanna let you know is that, um, I did send a letter home today, I know we all heard about Nashville. Um, we already have been meeting with our local emergency, and we do have, I'm not going to say the date, but during the month of April. We have a planned lockdown drill at all three schools, and so I'm just letting parents know if they drive by the school in April, and they see a large. You know, a lot of police cars and fire trucks, I don't want them to get nervous, I'm letting parents know that we are doing the lockdown drill with our police. And also to let um everybody know, is that we have been working with our local police, I don't know if you saw today, but twenty eight. Um, school districts across Massachusetts had a swatting threat, I I don't know if you're familiar with what swatting is. Swatting is when they call in like a bomb threat, or say there's an active shooter in the building, and it's all about getting the police to come and do like. It's all about attention, it's what it is, most of these are coming um from overseas, they're not even from around here, um, like Springfield had one today, Hampton had one today, um, Graylock had one today. Um, a lot of schools had them around Palmer, and um we have been working with our uh local police department, and we do have protocols in place already. If our district does receive um a a SWAT call, it's what they're called. So I just wanna assure you that we're on it, it's not something that we're pretending couldn't happen here, but that we have been working with our our local police department on protocols, I'm not going to share what they are, but that we do have. And that's all I have right now.
Mr. Tremel, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, two quick things, one, uh Garland mentioned this a little bit, but we did do our delayed start today for MCAS with three grades, uh, seven, eight, and ten testing. Uh, so they came in, regular start time at seven thirty, uh, it really, really went well, a credit to uh Ms. Shorter for her organization of. The students in the classrooms and the coverage, and to. To uh Mr. Green for his uh presence up there with his team. Uh, they did a lot of work prior to today to make sure that we, any. Uh, technology issues that were. Could be averted, were, and and they were, um. Some simple kind of accommodation and restart issues with some students, teacher type things were really. The only problems today, so it worked out well, and I looked at the attendance later on in the day, and it looked like we had. Really uh solid attendance for the kids that were coming in late as well, so. They didn't treat it as a, as a day off, so, um. I would, I agree with Garland, say it was a win, and and uh. We have tomorrow, which will finish up ELA, and then that uh end of April, so. Or May, middle of May, so a good start to that. Um, and I did touch base with John Amato, who is uh the point person for our field feasibility study. Um, we found him, actually, Rob found him.
Jones, well, he tried to reach out to him a couple times, I said, give me the number, I drive a lot, I'll call him. So he gives it, I call him first thing, and I, oh, ten, eleven o'clock, the very next day, he picks up the phone, John Amato, I'm like, hey, I'm like, how you doing?
He didn't recognize the number.
Don't know I got, and he's like.
Yeah, Eric, Eric called him a couple times, and he didn't get back to Eric, so I asked Eric for the number, I did it a couple times, nothing, Rob gave it, I said, alright, good luck with it, and. Fair enough, he got it.
Um, so I'm glad you talked to him.
Yeah, he told me.
Could be, could be, maybe he thought it was two or three area, yeah.
Well, he got.
He picked up the phone, that's good.
Yeah, we we uh.
What did he say?
We spoke to that. So he's coming up April thirteenth for uh a meeting at New Time Building and Grounds, um. Eric Wyckender knows the uh. The topography. the topography, the pictures that he needs. It was done with our study of the track a few years ago. So we have those. Uh, Mr. Amato was part of that process in some way already, so um he has a good understanding of it. So um we might need, I might need your help with the rec center and Wally Park as well as getting some aerials or pictures of that as well. The more we have, the better off uh the more in-depth this guy can start. But then from there, we're gonna discuss schedules and check-ins and coming up with a committee. So but we're excited to get this going. So.
So what time on the thirteenth? Because Erica Ted and I are on the.
New time on the thirteenth. If it works, everybody, I'll confirm it with him tomorrow.
That's awesome. And we did give we did give the talent on our on our budget meeting, we did give them a heads up that we are looking into this. Um, and there, and actually, the feedback we got was rather positive. They're like, look, let's keep in mind, we've got Wally, let's get everybody together, we'll figure out how to do it, but I touched base with a couple people after and said, look, we're really looking at feasibility of having a turf field here and maybe looking, and it's like, I got a lot of good positive feedback, so. So far, so good. We don't, we don't have a proposal.
Yeah, exactly.
But the initial feedback was good. All right, fantastic. Um, okay, subcommittees, negotiations, I'm assuming you're done right now? Finance, we're done, except for the votes now.
Do we have, do you guys have um town meeting dates offhand right now?
Oh, I don't. I believe Southwick's gonna be the seventeenth. There's something around that area because I think the.
I believe they're nineteenth.
The vote's the tenth. I don't know when Grandville and Tomlinson meetings are.
What was it, nine?
Oh, the ninth, so usually.
I believe it's the seventh, being through sixteenth.
I mean, Grandville and Tomlinson are usually like Monday, should they Mondays before that? So.
Oh, before?
Oh, always, yeah.
Yeah, it's all.
The towns start, they usually start the same.
They were usually the same day.
Yeah, last year they were on two separate days because it was near, we had to postpone one year or something.
Yeah.
But, yeah. But usually, yes, I mean, Grandville and Tomlinson are on the same day.
Yeah, so I'm.
The Biden card.
Yeah. They could probably, it's it's May, right? I think it's probably May eighth is is the Monday and the following Monday is May seventeen.
You said.
Yeah, we just put whatever. But hopefully they're not on the same day.
But they usually are.
Oh, really?
Yeah, seven, my seven here, five and the six have been on the same day.
Oh.
But usually, talent is voted on and usually you can go down, you can go down quickly.
Get to Grandville while you're in the middle of the presentation. Stop at Grandville on the way down. That's where the lengthy discussions.
If we need to, you and Garland go to Grandville, Joe and I can go to Tom.
Oh, thanks.
No, but, no?
No.
You know, you can.
It doesn't want us.
You're better off with uh one person, you want them out, get down, that's the way to do it.
No, I know, but if they're on the same date, same time.
Well, I mean, they put it, you can get out of Tom, Tom. She she's first on the schedule.
Oh.
Yeah, true.
We'll figure it out. All right, um.
Now, if you wanna come to Tom and just sit there and and watch, that's fine.
You got anything for collaborators?
Not really. Our last meeting was, um, you know how we moved our meeting because of the snow, it was on that day. So we had a super fast one, I remember that.
Yeah, I've got nothing on my end. Uh, policy, we already gave it, or policy, we got through C and D. Uh, we're starting with E next time, which I don't know when the next meeting is, but whatever the next meetings, it's been going really slow. Uh, building the grounds, obviously, we're gonna have a meeting on the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Um, I O T.
Next week, ladies, I'm gonna defer to you because that's opening day for track, so.
Oh, yes.
What's opening day for track? Uh, next Tuesday, whatever the day that we have, uh.
Sorry.
Yeah, so first, first meet, all, almost all the meets are home meets, which is really good. First one the next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, four o'clock.
Wellness, everybody wants?
Yeah.
We had a snow day on our last.
Uh, sped. Technology, we've already kinda had more technology updates issue than we have. Uh, capital committee, master plan, anything, Joe? Urban, Joe? God, sorry, that's my son.
Yeah, we we had our two capital meetings and uh I'm sure you heard all about it on Saturday with the fire department, the police department, and school and everybody else on, so. Uh, that's the capital. And the master plan, I missed the last meeting.
Fantastic. Athletics, we had one last week. Went well. We just, we've got another hundred and hundred, how many kids are participating? Hundred and ten?
A little more than that, I thought, one twenty.
So it was good, good turnout.
Wally Park.
Yeah, we're gonna use Wally for, because of the, again, the recurrent safety issues we're having with the baseball field, we're gonna use Wally for the for the for the baseball field. But we are gonna have just like we did last year, a number of night games at the end of the season for both softball and baseball, right?
Same number of games.
Is that for practice too? No, this game, what game?
Uh, baseball gets.
Baseball may get one a week. Before the game.
Yeah, so for games on Wednesday, you can practice Tuesday. So I think it's a practice and a game
Yeah.
a week of that, Wally.
You could just plus them there, plus your kids.
Um.
Make them learn.
No.
Take the other kids.
Yeah.
They'll scoot, they'll scoot through Foizie and just go. Um, but yeah, so things that went well, Mr. Shorter's first athletic meeting, it went very well, so we'll have one again next month. Uh, legislatures. Um, public count. We've nobody in. Thing here, let's done. Anything for, oh, old business. IT network, but I think we've already talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up. We already discussed it. Garland, um, anybody got anything else rural business?
My question was already answered. It was whether or not you talked to the guy about the field, so it's good.
Yep, anything for new business? Absolutely, you can.
Okay, I just wanna let you know that I am, I think I'm gonna be joining the rural school delegation. Um, I I'm pretty passionate about it right now after actually just going through the whole budget process and 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 really seeing the need for rural schools and um I started, I've already started, I, we have a Mars legislative meeting on Monday morning at nine and I'm really writing to advocate about the full funding of the sixty million dollars for rural schools. I said, that's really nice that they gave us that extra two million, but it's kinda like a here's, here's two million. Oh my. Um, it really, it's fifty thousand. I said, we had eight hundred thousand dollars in just our auto district vocational and special ed cost when our minimum local contribution is five hundred thousand. I'm like, we, rural schools can't keep operating this way. I I mean, toll harmless is great, but we don't get any SOA money, like we've got, we've got to start funding rural schools. It's just as serious as, you know, the the the, you know, the urban crisis with all the ELLs and stuff. We have issues there. So um I do know that uh I reached out to my friend who is, I think, running it right now. She's Mohawk Trail. And they had a meeting on Monday night and they're gonna have a template letter um that they're going to be drafting for us. And I will get it in your hands as soon as possible to start sending to legislators about the need um for additional funding for the rural school grant and to fully fund it. So as soon as I get it, I will get it into your hands. Okay?
That'd be great. I think it'd be awesome on there.
Yeah, thank you.
Super. Anything else? I will entertain any motion to a current.
So move.
Can I get a show of hands during the meeting? Aaron, let the record show, the motion passes seven zero zero. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.